Okay. It's 2:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to a war. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today is Thursday, December 10th, 2020. We're in the Alene Strain Community Room of the DAF Student Center, which is located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the Post-it Agenda. And there is a quorum present. So the meeting is called to war, and we'll take up the first Agenda item, which would be called to war, and then we'll ask Mr. Baker to give us the invocation. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Please bow with me. Lord, we're very thankful today for the season. We're thankful for this time of rest and reflection and celebration. Thank you for our board and their service to our college. Thank you for protecting our faculty, staff, and students during this time. We pray you'll continue to protect them, bring them back in January, and allow us to have a great spring. We thank you for our board and be with them in their deliberation. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Let's stand and all lead us in this pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Anyone on our public comments today?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to number three on the Agenda, President's Report. President Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a free, brief, a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and a trustee training report. Recognitions. Congratulations to Dr. Diane Ainsworth on being named the 2020 Faculty Member of the Year and to Adam Finley on being named the 2020 Staff Member of the Year. We are proud of both of them, the many nominees and finalists, and of the entire team of amazing people that collectively make Weatherford College. Thank you to Weatherford College faculty and staff for recently donating food items to the Center of Hope. There has never been a better time to support those in need. After a strong showing at the Texas Tech rodeo, the WC women ended the fall season in second place, and the men are in sixth place. The team point leader is Kinley Bernice with a total of 320 points. And finally, Weatherford College celebrates Board Appreciation Month each December. We deeply appreciate your volunteer service to the college and the community. The countless hours that you contribute to our college are recognized and highly appreciated. Teresa and Shelley have some token gifts, a coffee tumbler and some chocolates as a small token of our appreciation for your volunteer service. So thank you for all that you do for Weatherford College.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're very welcome. You're welcome. Thank you. Oh, wait. Oh.
Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Brenda Key, an Administrative Assistant in Institutional Effectiveness, has retired effective 12/31/2020. We thank Brenda for her service and wish her the very best in future endeavors. Trustee Training Report. Each of you have been provided with a spreadsheet detailing trustee training and attendance. I am pleased to report that at this time, all trustees are in compliance with mandatory trustee training. Our two new trustees will need to complete the required full orientation course within the first year of service, and Mr. Carney will need to complete the Public Funds Investment Training and Open Meetings Act training by the January 2021 meeting. Thank you again for your volunteer service to our college and community. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Any questions or comments on number three? If not, we'll move to Consent Agenda, Financial Reports, and Agenda Item Number Four. I hope everyone's had the opportunity to review all those different items on that agenda. And if there are any questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and financial reports as presented?
I say a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Move to number five, Consideration Possible Action, 2019, 2020 Financial Audit, and we'll ask Lindsay Kinimer, Snow Garrett Williams, to come forward and, or to stand at that podium and present the audit. And we appreciate you being here today. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name's Lindsay Kinimer, and I have a partner with Snow Garrett Williams. Dr. Farmer may have already told you, but Kathy Williams is recovering at home from COVID, so I am here with her summary notes to go through the presentation. And we will start with the bound copy of the audit report, and we're going to start on page three. Page three is our independent auditor's report, and I'm going to review over a few of the highlights, starting in the first paragraph. Under Report on the Financial Statements, we state that we have audited the financial statements of Weatherford College as of and for the years ended August 31st, 2020 and 2019. If you move down to the next paragraph, under Management's Responsibility, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Move down to the next paragraph, under Auditor's Responsibility, our responsibility is to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit. We have conducted our audits in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also with government auditing standards. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. If you'll turn the page and go to page four. Under Opinions, we state that, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position as of August 31st, 2020 and 2019, and the respective changes in financial position and cash flows for Weatherford College. And this is a clean or an unmodified audit opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we can give you on the financial statements. We also issue reports in accordance with government auditing standards over internal controls and compliance, as well as with the Uniform Guidance for Single Audits, and both of those reports also had a clean, unmodified opinion and did not have any findings. We're going to move over and take a look at page 13. Pages 13 and 14 are the statement of net position, which is your balance sheet. Page 13, you have your assets. The total assets at August 31st, 2020 were 103,619,005 compared to 98,402,577 in 2019, and this was approximately a $5.2 million increase. And that most of that increase was in cash and cash equivalents, and then also in capital assets. If you'll move over to page 14. Page 14 has your liabilities and your net position. Total liabilities at August 31st, 2020 were 56,796,064 compared to 53,958,50 in 2019, and this was an increase of around 2.1 million, and that was due mainly to an increase in accounts payable and an unearned revenue. This brings us down to a total net position at the bottom of the page of 53,212,883 compared to in 2019, 50,898,401, and this was approximately a $2.3 million increase. We're going to move over a couple of pages and go to page 16. Page 16 is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, which is your income statement. Your total operating revenues for 2020 were 18 million compared to 15,944 in 2019. This was an increase of around $2 million. Most of that was an increase in tuition and fees and in federal grants due to the CARES funding. If you move down to the total operating expenses, for 2020, this was 50,184 compared to 48,808 in 2019, and this was an increase of about 1.3 million, which brings us to an operating loss before your nonoperating revenues and expenses of a negative 32,184. If you take into account the net operating revenues and expenses, which is your state appropriations, property tax, and other federal grants, those were 34,498. So added back to that net loss of 32 million, this brought you to an increase in net position of 2,314, and again, your ending net position was 53,212. And that's the last financial statement we'll go over, but Kathy did want me to remind everybody that the Weatherford College Foundation is not included in that set of financial statements. It is in this report on page 17, but that net increase in net position of 2.3 million was only for the college. So the foundation also had an increase in net position of 1,021, and that's on page 17, if anybody would like to look at that. Overall, it was a very good year financially for the college. There were many changes, including personnel changes, the new accounting system, of course, the pandemic, which everybody's had to adjust to. And the college, from what Kathy has told me, did a great job adjusting and adapting to all of those changes. And the last thing that she wanted me to mention are there are two loose letters with the bound report. One of them is the management letter, and there's only one comment in that letter, and I won't read over it completely, but it's basically just a reminder of the importance of internal controls and to continue implementing those controls and making sure that they're in place. The other letter is just our required communication letter that we have to give you as the Board of Trustees. Well, thank y'all for letting me present. If you have any questions, I don't know that I'll be able to answer them, but if you have anything that you'd like to gather, we can give those back to Kathy, and she can communicate any answers with you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinimer.
Thank you.
Before you leave, let me ask, are there any questions or comments by the board? Dr. Farmer, do you have any questions or comments?
A comment. One, appreciate the good work by Snow Garrett Williams, but I would really like to send accolades to faculty, staff, and the entire administrative team, as well as the board, for the effective governance that has led to quite a highly successful financial year for both the college and the foundation, all in the midst of a global pandemic. So I appreciate all parties involved.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. And with all of that information and discussion, is there a recommendation? There is a recommendation, and is there a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Financial Audit as presented? Is there a motion?
I say a move.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome, Matt.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move to number six. To Mr. Curly, Consideration Possible Action, GMP for Workforce and Emerging Technologies Building?
Yes, sir. We have a representative here from Imperial who is the author and responsible party for the guaranteed maximum price. I'll let him tell you how we arrived at that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good to see all you guys again. Thank you very much for having me again this month. What we've done, and I'll just kind of back-brief on what we've talked about previously and then get into what we haven't. Previously, we have approved a GMP that's going to be commonly referred to as GMP Number One for Bid Package Number One. GMP Number One had a guaranteed maximum price of $3,657,987. All of Bid Package One is what you see currently going on on the project site currently. Bid Package 2.1, Bid Package 2.2 are what we're here to talk about today. In November, I presented you with a guaranteed maximum price for Bid Package 2.1 of $8,670,062. Since I've seen you last, we have bid Bid Package 2.2, which had a guaranteed maximum, which I'm presenting today, is a guaranteed maximum price of $9,963,701. What we are presenting is to roll Bid Package 2.1 and Bid Package 2.2 into one guaranteed maximum price superseding what we presented in November to a total value between 2.1 and 2.2 of $18,633,763. This gives a grand total for construction costs, guaranteed maximum price by Imperial Construction, of $22,291,750. That's all of your construction costs, that's subcontractors, that's contingencies, that's Imperial supervision, that's allowances, that's your construction cost for the workforce solutions building. To discuss some of the cost savings or some of the savings that we received based on budgetary numbers and some of the savings that we might have received due to the economic climate or nature of the construction market. When we budgeted Bid Package One, we estimated a budget of $5 million. As I stated, the guaranteed maximum price for Bid Package One was $3.6 million. So we had almost a million and a half dollars' worth of cost savings there from our budget to what we got on bid day. Bid Package 2.1 budgeted at $9.5 million. When we bid it out on bid day, we bid it out at $8.6 million. Bid Package 2, 2.2, budgeted at approximately $11 million. When we bid it out, we came in at approximately $9.9 million. So we've seen significant cost savings throughout the design of the project as these costs have been able to come down as the design has been narrowed in to get us to this point. I think we've probably also seen some fluctuation in the market, some hungerness by our subcontractors and lack of work. So there was a lot of interest in your project, and I think it reflected in the cost savings that we were able to show you based on the budgets versus what we're presenting. We've worked with Huckabee, we've worked with Weatherford College, we've worked with Raleigh McCoy and Associates to get to this point, and we would like your consideration to approve the $18,633,763 for GMP Number Two, which includes Bid Package 2.1 and Bid Package 2.2. And I want to reaffirm that the $18 million that we're putting in front of you supersedes the $8.6 million that we presented last month. It includes that as well as Bid Package 2.2.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions, I would, I'd love to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments? Dr. Farmer?
Just a comment. Very pleased so far. We have consistently been under budget and on schedule, and that's exactly how we like to do business. So thank you for your quality work.
Yes, sir. And if there's anything that we can do for the college throughout this process, please contact myself and let us know what we can do to help you guys out.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So the, and before you leave, I want to make sure that I have the right number for the purpose of the motion that's in front of us here. The total construction cost that we are considering, that is proposed for approval today would be $22,291,750. Is that correct?
In a way, yes, sir. The, you've already approved 3.6 million.
I understand that.
So what you are, what we are asking you to approve today is the 18 million.
Okay. Well, then, for the purposes, purpose of our motion, we will, I'm going to ask for a motion that will approve the total guaranteed maximum price offered by Imperial Construction as the construction manager at risk for the workforce in the emerging technologies building, that the board accepts the total guaranteed maximum price of construction at this time for $22,291,750 to include your presentation today plus the other guaranteed maximum price amounts that have been previously discussed and approved by the board. Is there such a motion? There is. Okay. Mr. Carney makes that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on that? If not, we'll move to the next Agenda item. Which is Consideration Possible Action, Order of Authorizing the Issuance of Parker County Junior College District Consolidated Fund Revenue Bond Series 2020, Mr. Matt Bowles, RBC Capital Markets. How are you today, sir?
I'm great. Thank you. How are you?
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good afternoon, Dr. Farmer, members of the board, the public. For the record, my name is Matt Bowles. I'm your financial advisor, and I'm with RBC Capital Markets. And it was great to hear that information just ahead of this item, because we're now going to discuss how you can finance this, what looks to be like an already started and tremendous asset from the picture that I saw coming in today. The process has been going for quite some time. As you all know, I worked with Dr. Farmer and Dr. Cantrell and many others in this room to possibly do a financing locally with a local institution. For a lot of good reasons, we're going to go with a public offering, which we're going to discuss today, not the least of which is rates are so incredibly low that it's just advantageous for the college to go to the public market. So I'm glad to be here to do that today. The plan of finance that I have on the, on the screen here, I'm going to hit just a couple of pages about the general economic environment, because that leads me to the point of discussing interest rates. Obviously, in the midst of a global pandemic, our government has done everything they can to make sure, from a monetary policy standpoint, that they keep the short end of the yield curve as low as possible to enable liquidity, particularly as it relates to borrowing and funding projects, not the least of which are public finance and capital projects in the public realm. There's some information here about what has already occurred with respect to legislation, the Invest Act of America, that you're probably well aware of. There's daily discussions around additional stimulus that may come. I don't think we'll see a whole lot of that that will affect you all as it relates to this project, but my just, generally overall, monetary policy is very favorable for borrowing right now. We've got some economic data here that I'm going to just skip over, but it's interesting information. If you should want to go back and look at it, we've definitively come a long way since March, and we have a good, stable market within which to operate. The information on Slide Six is really what I want to discuss in the lower left-hand corner, just to give you a sense of where we stand today with respect to municipal bond rates. The lower left-hand graph has three curves on it. The top curve you see there is essentially the 15-year average MMD. So this goes, this is AAA Municipal Bond Index, goes out to 30 years, and you can see the averages, you know, starts just at over a percent and rises all the way in the long end to almost 4%. And then the blue bar, which is where we were this time last year, the light blue bar, and then the green bar is where we stand today. So we are well below the average and well below where we were last year, and there is tremendous stability. So as we talk about timing in a little bit, I have great confidence that we'll have this stability for some period of months within which to do this transaction for you. And just one last thing, I find this graph incredibly interesting and powerful. At the top of the page here, this goes all the way back to 1961, so there's lots of data points here, and it's a weekly rate of an index, or it's a basket of municipal bonds that's taken on a weekly basis. And I think the blue bar in the middle of the page says everything. This week's rate of 2.13% is lower than 99.8% of all of the other data points on this graph. So it'd be really hard, with the exception of one other week, to get to the bottom of where we stand today. And again, I think we'll continue to operate in that for many months to come. We did go ahead and include on Page 10 just the college's outstanding debt profile. I won't go through that in depth, but to say that today, we're going to talk about the issuance of additional revenue bonds. We do have one series outstanding, your Series 2012 Bonds, that's almost 8 million. I'm sorry, that is just over 5.5 million. That's right. And then the plan of finance. And so when I previously visited with you all, we talked about, again, a private offering to local institutions. Today, we're going to pivot to the public market, so these bonds will be saleable and readily available to the investing public whenever you all move forward with this sale. Most of the information on this page we have covered before, but this financing is entirely for the workforce training facility that is currently under construction here. The contemplated structure is outlined in the bottom half of this page. It contemplates the sale of bonds in January of 2021, or somewhere around there, for approximately 29.5 million to fund the construction fund, which includes the guaranteed maximum price that was previously discussed, all the costs of doing the transaction. It is a 30-year structure with a 10-year standard par call, so that means in 10 years, they can be redeemed from investors at par or 100% of their value without penalty. This assumes that the bonds will be sold with enhanced ratings, which means we'll purchase insurance in the private bond market. Right now, your revenue debt rating is A+. We do want to have a very serious conversation with Standard and Poor's about that rating. Obviously, this is a big initiative for you all. There's a lot going on in the world, particularly in the higher ed world, and so we'll be very diligent about going through a process with Dr. Farmer and his staff with respect to the rating on this transaction. And the rates we've used for this particular model were just here of late. We did add a 25 basis point cushion, so a quarter of a point in cushion. And this is preliminarily what the transaction would look like on the right-hand side of the page with respect to your annual debt service payments. I'll make a quick note that in 2021, we capitalized that payment, because you won't yet have the facility up and running, and so you'll, the payment will be funded with proceeds of the bond issue, but thereafter, the college will be responsible for making those debt service payments. And then on the left-hand side, upper-left quadrant, you can see some statistical information. And I always like to go to that line, all-in TIC, 2.9%. Again, that's indicative entirely of where we stand today. If you took the cushion out of that, it'd be 25 basis points less, so you'd be looking somewhere in the 2.6 range, which is entirely incredible, given the 30-year structure, the revenue structure, and so forth. The sources and uses is on the lower left-hand portion of the page. You'll see the project fund funded at 29.505 million. Make sure I get that right.
Yep.
And then this would be the combined revenue debt service, including the last issue that I discussed earlier, and this issue, just to give you a sense of what that looks like going forward. Now, the actual Agenda item that you have today calls for consideration of an order that has been presented to you all. I think what we are going to recommend, though, given the nature of the transactions, that you authorize RBC Capital Markets and your administration to carry out the transaction, but that we will come back to you with the final results of that transaction before you actually pass this order, so that all of the blanks are filled in, the maturity schedule, the interest rates, all of that information is filled in that order. So you do have a copy of the order. I'm glad to answer questions about it. We'll come back to you, and right now, we have set that up to come back to you. You have a regular board meeting, we believe. You have a regular board meeting, we believe, on the 11th of February. I'll double-check that. We can obviously modify the schedule if needed, which means that we would actually set the rates the day before, have the order completed, all the documents ready, and so that when I show up here on the 11th, everything is fully complete, you have a full picture. I'll go through a full sales results book that outlines the terms and conditions of the transaction, the interest rate, the payment, and that sort of thing. And then we would fund the transaction some 30 days later, once it clears the Attorney General's office. Looks like that's on or about the 11th of March, and you can then reimburse yourself for costs that you've incurred already with the project and move forward with the additional expenditures. That's all I have. I recognize I've dumped a lot on you here, and I would certainly want to be here to answer questions or discuss things more in-depth if you need to, so I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments about the presentation at this point from the board? Dr. Farmer?
Mr. Bowles, thank you so much for all of your assistance. It's been a long process, a long journey, and I think we made a significant goodwill with our local banks and financing partners through your collaborative efforts, and we appreciate you pulling all of this together. It seems like there's never been quite a time as right as now, when rates are so low and construction costs are favorable. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. All right. If you'll hang with us just a minute, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of sketch out a motion, as I understand we need to make it at this point, Mr. Bowles. So if I need your help to correct me on the wording, I want you to jump in, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. What I understand is that we want the motion to address moving forward on the issuance of Parker County Junior College District Consolidated Fund Revenue Bond Series 2020, pending an order that will be presented to the board in about 30 to 60 days. The order is in proper form now, but it's a little premature to actually authorize the order, and so we're going to just authorize moving forward with regard to getting to the order. Is that...
Very well said.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect? There is. Thank you, Mr. Curley. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Doc.
You bet, man.
Motion, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much.
See you in February.
See you in a couple of months, month, a couple of months. Thank you, sir. All right. We will move to agenda item number eight, consideration possible action approved revised Weatherford College mission statement, 2021 through 2026 strategic goals as well. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. How are you today?
I'm great.
Thank you.
Better without the pass. In your fourth packet, you've got a rephrased mission statement for the college that's been vetted through faculty, staff, students, and administrators. We've made some additions. We added our culture of excellence. We've added fostering successive students to reflect our culture of caring. And the big thing in our expanded mission statement is the addition of her Bachelor of Applied Science degrees. Are there any questions about the mission statement?
I don't hear any. Thank you.
Okay. And then you've also got our proposed Weatherford College strategic goals that will guide our planning for the next five years. These were basically updated from our current strategic goals. Again, if you've got questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
Are there any questions? Don't hear any.
Good, it's good.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments additional to the board at this point? Dr. Farmer, any comments by you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, not only to Dr. Atkins, but as you mentioned, faculty, staff, a lot of work at a lot of different levels providing input into this product. And so I think all parties involved, we're moving forward in the right direction because of the collaborative efforts. So thank you to everyone.
My question.
Sure, Dr. Marlet.
The use of Weatherford College is inclusive to all the campuses of the college, is that, that's what you're talking about? So there's no need to address any particular campus or outreach or satellite program when you use the term Weatherford College. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We're speaking about a system-wide that includes all of the outreach locations.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Marlet?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the revised Weatherford College mission statement and the 2021-2026 strategic goals as presented and as stated here in our material?
I shall move.
Motion, is there a second? Dr. Marlet, second. Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. That's unanimously approved. Thank you. Moving to number nine, reports, President Farmer, guided pathways demand study update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've come accustomed to, you've been provided written reports in advance of the guided pathways update, a number with hearts, our demand study, and a lot of work of late has gone into our quality enhancement plan as we prepare for our SOX reaffirmation visit. So that information is there for you. We have Dr. Atkins with us, should you have any questions about the quality enhancement plan, and Mr. Indy is standing by in the overflow area, should you have any other questions regarding his submitted reports.
Dr. Farmer, any other comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
We'll move to agenda item number 10, future agenda items or meetings. Dr. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In January, we will be bringing forward the 2021-2022 academic calendar for your consideration and potential approval. You will call the election for the Board of Trustees for the May, excuse me, for the spring 2021 election, and you'll be presented with the equities and athletics report, all in the month of January 2021.
Any questions or comments by the board on any of those items? We'll move to number 11, announcements. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We do have our college closing at noon on December the 18th for the holidays. We'll reopen on January the 4th. Spring semester begins on January the 11th, and our athletics offerings begin January 13th with our first basketball game of the year.
Does that cover it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving to number 12, we will, at this point, close the open session and adjourn to the closed session to take up 12 A, B, C, and D, and after we complete that, we'll reconvene and take up the agenda thereafter. Let's make that about a three-minute break. Thank you. And we have no action item there that needs motion today. Number 14, consideration possible action, appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duty, discipline, dismissal of a public offer employee. Same comment on that. There's no action item, no motion needed on that. So we'll move to 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Atkins.